You have the agenda on there? Forgot. I got it. You got paper? Perfect. All right. It is little after 6:30. We will call the common council meeting to order at this time. Welcome to those in attendance, those watching at home, and to the council to our March meeting. At this time, we will have the clerk call the roll.
Brian?
Here.
Comer? Williams?
Here.
Novak?
Here.
Lutz?
Here.
Sikala?
Here.
Howe?
Here.
Gabriel?
Here.
Sitkowitz?
Here.
McMeans?
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. At this time, everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance. After that, you can have a seat, and we have a special prayer this evening that Alderman McMeans will announce.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so for our invocation tonight, over this past year, I've taken the opportunity to share with council and with our community, some of our leaders in our religious community. And so tonight, I've invited Pastor Roger Harrison from the Open Bible Baptist Church to be here. And Pastor Harrison is not only leads his church, but he's also one of a few of our police chaplains who were awarded this year as Citizen of the Year. So congratulate you, as well as your colleagues, for the work that you do and the dedication to our community.
Thank you. I know it's officially spring on Wednesday, but after yesterday, I think I'm going to claim this as the first week, as I'm so done with winter. My back is killing me from the snow. And I haven't slipped all the way down, but I have almost gone down way more times than I can count. I was honored when Councilman Scott McMeans asked me to open this session with prayer. And the opportunity, really, it makes me feel like I'm part of the community more than you can imagine, honestly. And I want you all to know, I appreciate the extra work it takes to involve others and maybe give a little bit of extra time to people. This is, might seem trivial, but to us outsiders, it really is a way for us to connect with government. And in a day when I see more and more people disconnecting in every form, I really genuinely appreciate what you folks do for us every single day. And I've prayed for you also often in private. That's not a lie or a joke. It's the honest truth. And many of my name, my aldermen, of course, Mr. Howe, and of course, my mayor, but the others of you. And actually, for almost 20 years, I've been now a member in this community. And I've worked with and pastored the people of Open Bible Baptist for almost 20 years now. And I've been a police chaplain now for nine, and now chaplain with the Holy Family Hospital. That's a privilege as well. And I've graduated three of my five children from Lincoln High School. And my fourth will graduate this year, walk down the grass aisle. And I told her on Friday, I picked her up from school, and I said, "Well, you know, you turn 18 on Sunday, so if you want to go back to school on Monday, it's really your choice."[277.95][277.95](laughter) And she didn't say, "I'm done, I'm leaving." No, she said, "I want to go back." So I'm thanking God for that decision. It's a blessing. My son went to the Air Force right away. But two of my kids graduated right from the UW here, in Manitowoc with their associates. And one went on to Madison, and one went on to Oshkosh to graduate. So I love this community. And I want to stay here. I want to bring all five of them. And through the school system and through the blessings that you folks have here, and I just want to say that from the bottom of my heart, I want to encourage you. I don't have a pitch, I don't have a beef. I genuinely enjoy living here. I plan to retire here. And God has blessed me with you folks. You have a lot to do with why I want to stay here. But I know that we can all sense an increased complexity in our jobs, and the speed of change is blinding. And I know you feel that. It seems like nothing is done, but shortly, it must be done over. And with a higher standard and with greater scrutiny, and law and government is no different. And you people are under extreme pressure. And I thought for just a second, I just want to give you some encouragement. You might wonder why. And I've thought about it many times, but when I was a boy, my dad told me that, growing up, the speed limit in his town was reasonable and proper. That's not the speed limit anymore. It's now, somebody looked around and said, "Hey, there's way too many cars on the street, way too many people, driving too fast. I think we ought to make a speed limit in this town." And what did they do? They passed a law, 25 miles an hour. And then some guy got pulled over for going way too fast in a school zone. An officer thought it was a little bit too fast. And somebody said, "You know, we ought to make another law. You can't do 25 in school zones. That's just way too fast. We ought to make a law, 15 in school zones." And then some guy got pulled over on Sunday in front of the school, going 15, little over 15. And he's like, "Well, what in the world do we have a speed limit for when there's no kids here?" So they had to make another law. Okay, it's 15, but only on school days. And then what happened? Some guy got pulled over in the school zone on a school day, and he's like, "Well, what gives? There's no kids out here! I mean, why are you ticketing me when there's no ki-" I mean, most of the time, they're not even there, right? And then so they made another law on school days when children are present. And I learned from the officers I've ridden with, they gotta be on the sidewalk, otherwise it doesn't count. What I'm getting at is, the reason why we have to keep making laws is because our laws are not perfect. There's only one law that's perfect. And the Bible says in Psalm 19, "The law of the Lord is perfect, converting the soul." And really, what I'm after as a church is I'm trying to make you pass less laws by trying to convert the soul. Because we know, when somebody said to Jesus, "What's the most important law?", he said, "Well, love God with all your heart, soul, mind, and strength, and love your neighbor as yourself." If more people were doing that, they would have less work to do. And so I genuinely appreciate the benefit and the small things that they do for my church. Because I know, you could pass a rainwater tax, and my parking lot area would then be, you know, it'd make it hard on me. I genuinely appreciate the tax break. Folks, I'm saying, I really do, I really do enjoy working in this town, and it's a privilege. So let me pray and ask God to help you with your never-ending laws that you have to pass, that God will help us all. Heavenly Father, thank you for the privilege of working with people that do have a relationship with God. And we thank you, God, for a community that has a spirit. God, this place, Manitowoc, is known as the place of the good spirit. That's what the word means. And God, I like to think of that as a place where people acknowledge who God is, and where a mayor and a city council don't ignore God, but in, not just public, but in private, they would pray, and they would not be ashamed to read a Bible. And God, I thank you for the privilege of being able to live in a quiet and peaceable life and to raise children in this town. And I pray, God, that you would bless these people before us. God, the weight on their shoulders is huge, and I pray, God, that maybe just today, they would know from my voice that we believe God smiles on work that's done genuinely for the benefit of people. Thank you for their timeless and tireless efforts. And we pray your blessing, God, on this town and these people, for Jesus' sake. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pastor. Appreciate that, those kind words. We'll try not to pass so many laws tonight for you. Appreciate it. We are going to move on to presentations, and we are actually going to bump up the city clerk administering the oath of office, Police Officer Jacob Gardner, because my understanding is that Officer Gardner is actually working and needs to get back out on the streets. So we're going to get him sworn in, so he can start pulling people over in those school zones. So if you want to come up with your family, any other officers who are here for the swearing and ceremony.
If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I, Jacob R. Gardner.
I, Jacob R. Gardner.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
Of the City of Manitowoc.
Of the City of Manitowoc.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me, God.
All right. Stacy, if you want to, you're clicking?[783.00][783.00](laughter) All right. Next, we have a very special presentation. A few years ago, we recognized that Tom Drill truly was an inspiration to this community, that what he does each and every day, by volunteering, by helping out, by lending a hand, is exactly the type of person we love to see in our community. And we would wish that there were a thousand Tom Drills that we could tout. And we thought to ourselves, you know, there are a lot of people in this community that truly do give back of their time and their talents, that make this community a great place to live, to work, and to play. And it's not a selected officials up here necessarily. It's those who are out and about, raising money for a good cause, volunteering, supporting individuals, whatever the case may be. We got a lot of them. So the first year, we did this a few years ago. We officially named this the Tom Drill City of Manitowoc Volunteer of the Year Award, because we want those who follow in Tom's footsteps to emulate what he does, and what he's done for this community and what he shows. The second year, we provided this honor to Leah Hale, who started the Hopeful Hearts Club in the city of Manitowoc for the Women's Homeless Shelter. She went out, raised money for coats for children, for toys for children. And she did it all as a, started out as a nine-year-old girl, and still does it to this day with the main goal of helping those who are less fortunate than her. And that was another idea of young people in this community that are stepping forward in giving of their time and talents. Leah couldn't be here this evening. Tom, you in the back there? I don't know, my glasses on, I can't see that far. But Tom Drill is here. We invited Tom, since it's named after him, you know. It's great that he can be here for the two that we're awarding today. Leah couldn't be here, but she did write something in support of the two individuals who are receiving this award this evening. And I'm going to try and get through it without getting teary-eyed, because it's Leah. "Hi, everyone. Sorry I can't be there to celebrate with you. I am taking my very first driving lesson tonight. If you happen to see a really nervous girl behind the wheel of a white Advantage driving vehicle on your way home tonight, it may be a good idea to give that girl a little extra room. I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate Mr. Heinzen and Mrs. Zimer. They are both amazing. Both of these people have touched so many lives with their generosity and hard work. Each has used his or her talents, perseverance, and kindness to make Manitowoc a better place to call home. I may be only 15 years old, but I know how lucky I am to live in this community. It's because of people like Mr. Heinzen and Mrs. Zimer. I have said for years that the children in our community are our futures. They are the ones who will carry what they learn and experience, and carry that with them forever. If they feel loved, they will spread love. And the two people being celebrated tonight are wonderful examples of what it means to support, encourage, and truly love a child. To Mr. Heinzen and Mrs. Zimer, I say this: You are both so deserving of this honor. Your dedication and kindness are a gift to us all. Manitowoc is lucky to have you. Thank you for all that you have done for this community, and congratulations on this honor. You are both an inspiration and a shining beacon of hope, not only to me, but to everyone in Manitowoc." So that's from Leah. And that is very fitting, because both of the individuals who are receiving a key to the city and receiving a block on our Volunteer Walk of Fame, which now that the snow has melted, you can finally see, but it'll have their name inscribed in there, right next to Tom Drill's, forever and ever, as an individual in this community who truly went above and beyond. We unfortunately had to push it off, because we used to do this during Showtime, and unfortunately, Showtime didn't happen last time. But we're going to continue doing this, so we have 2017 and 2018 to honor today. Our first one is for 2017. And like I mentioned, it's truly remarkable that Leah said all those words, because both these individuals have been giving back so much to our children and our community. I think it goes without saying, Randy and Laura probably won't agree with this, because there were a lot of people who made these things happen. But I think I can honestly say that the city of Manitowoc would not have a youth baseball complex, nor a Miracle League field, if not for Randy Heinzen and Laura Zimer. That is the truth. So Randy is the first one, Randy Heinzen. If you want to come on up, Randy, we don't have to just look at pictures of you, we can look at you. But Randy has served this community for years in several different capacities. St. Francis of C.C. Parish and School, serving on several committees and the Board of Education. Ron Colley High School, served on committees, coached baseball, the president of the Ron Colley Athletic Association, sponsored 25 to 30 local softball, basketball, and volleyball teams each year as the owner and operator of Randy's Sports Center. Served 21 years as the chairman of Lakeshore Weekend, a local fundraiser benefiting Children's Hospital. And how much was raised over that time?
1.5 million.
1.5 million dollars raised for that. Serves as the Manitowoc-
Yeah, exactly.[1141.15][1141.15](applause)
Serves as the Manitowoc Youth Baseball Association President and Treasurer, bringing an incredible complex to the city of Manitowoc for tons of our youth, and youth all throughout the state to appreciate in our summer. And Randy has been honored for his acts of volunteerism, hard work, and leadership. In 2012, he received the Tom Drill Volunteer Award from the Chamber, another one named after Tom Drill. In 2016, Randy was awarded the Joseph P. Schmitz Speak-Up Award by the Chamber of Manitowoc County. And most recently, in 2018, Randy was inducted into the Lakeshore All-Sports Hall of Fame. Please join me in congratulating the 2017 Volunteer of the Year, Randy Heinzen.[1183.08][1183.08](applause)
Those are some tough words to follow from the letter that Mayor Nichols just read, and tough act to follow with Tom Drill in the back of the room. I just want to be very brief tonight, and just start out by saying thank you to Mayor Nichols for allowing me to stand up here tonight, to accept this Volunteer of the Year Award. I'm very honored, I'm very humbled to be here. The journey to get here happens because of this community, because of the great volunteers that we have in this community. The quote that I had talked about, and some of you may have heard me say before, it's very simple, but it's something I truly believe in, that when you surround yourself with good people, great things happen. And throughout the course of my life, I've been very fortunate. Really, back in 1990, when Connie and I got married, that was the first time I surrounded myself with good people. She's one of the main reasons that I'm standing here tonight. With all the different projects, all the different things that we've done, she's the one back in the, doing all the behind-the-scenes work. I'm up here taking the credit for a lot of stuff that she's done. A lot of this continued during our 26-year run. We talked about the Lakeshore Weekend for Kids, where I was surrounded with just an absolutely incredible group of volunteers. As we mentioned, we raised 1.5 million dollars for Children's Hospital of Wisconsin. And then a few years ago, you know, there's a bunch of us that came together, a bunch of volunteers, and we had this dream of building a youth baseball and softball complex in the city of Manitowoc. And it took a little longer than anticipated to raise 2.2 million dollars, but with the fantastic committee, a group of volunteers, we were able to help make that dream become a reality. And two years ago, we opened up the Manitowoc Youth Sports Complex at Citizens Park, and now we are maintaining it. We've got a ton of things exciting going on for this upcoming season. Registration underway, we are ready to start our third season. So all that came with the help of a very, very strong group of volunteers. So just in closing, I want to say my hat's off to the many volunteers that through the years I've had the privilege of working with. They truly are the reason that I'm standing here tonight.
Thank you very much. Laura, if you would like to come on up. Our 2018 Volunteer of the Year is Laura Zimer. Laura has received awards recognizing her hard work and leadership in volunteerism. She has Driven to Achieve Award from Donald Driver himself. Lucky, uh, shouldn't have started with that one. Now we know which one's your favorite. Alumni Award for Excellence in Servant Leadership from Silver Lake College. Community Service Award from the Lakeshore All-Sports Hall of Fame. 2013 Outstanding Young Wisconsinite from the Wisconsin J.C.'s. And you were nominated for the 2018 Life Changer Award. You have also been involved with many different things, most notably the Miracle League of the Lakeshore. Lakeshore Special Needs Prom since 2014. Operation Prom, she has collected hundreds of dresses for girls to try on and pick one to wear to Special Needs Prom. Manitowoc Backpack Buddies, assisted with this program started by some young volunteers in the community, Jaylee Luke, Leah, and Jacob. Laura's constant can-do attitude and outlook reflects in all the children she works with. She's setting a great example, not only for her own children, but for the many children in this community whose lives would not be the same without her. And I can say, (laughter) you're making me cry. I can say Laura has always supported me, and supported the city, and supported something that is very near and dear to my heart, people who have special needs and people like Laura step up to make their lives much better. And that's very special to me. The one quote that she has that she always gets me with, she always ends every email, it's the best advice in the world, and it's going to be on her plaque, which is outside, which is, "Keep smiling." Join me in a round of applause for our 2018 Volunteer of the Year, Laura Zimer.[1481.23][1481.23](applause)
Thank you. "Life is a journey, not a destination," famous words by Ralph Waldo Emerson. It is true. Life is a journey, and we need to celebrate it. Everyone in this room's lives have crossed paths for one reason or another. We may or may not know why. I know that my life has been changed by so many people who I never thought would have such a huge impact on me. I met Dean and her family when I was 20, and my life changed in so many ways. She was my inspiration and led me to my meeting so many other amazing people in this community. I remember when Glenn and I had this idea, and met with other families who were so excited about this six and a half years ago. I remember when our committee brought this idea to the public, and many thought, "That's a pipe dream." But with hard work and dedication, we made it achievable. We have been truly blessed by this community's support. Thank you, Mayor Nichols, for believing in us and all my crazy ideas. By the way, thanks for the accessible wheelchair pass to the beach.[1554.01][1554.01](laughter) Yeah, thank you guys for that. Thank you for the accessible path to the beach. Thank you to Goodwill, N C W, and Nancy Hikes for taking us under your wing. Thank you to the committee members in the league who listen, help, and make things happen on a daily basis to make our league a success. I truly could not have done it without all of you, all of your help, your time, and support. Thank you, Nicole, Rob, the Prez, Wendy, Luke, Paul, Brandon, Brianna, D.J., Wayne, Vicky, Taryn, Julie, Colton, Eleanor, and all the others who have helped on this committee in one way or another. If you're in the stands right now, or the seats right now, raise your hand, and let's give them a round of applause.[1591.01][1591.01](applause) Thank you to my parents, my family, my friends, my husband, and my kids for believing in me and for allowing me to make dreams come true. I know I have been away at nights, but this has become our lives, and thank you. Thank you to all the players, families, coaches, buddies, umpires, announcers, concession stand workers, and all the other volunteers for participating in our league and continuing to make it successful. Six and a half years later, 125 players and over 200 volunteers have participated in the Miracle League, going into our sixth year of our league and our second of our over-19 league. And we continue to grow. Being on the field is truly one of my favorite places to be, and I'm honored to spend my summer nights with all of you. The Miracle League isn't about playing baseball. It's about a sense of hope, about gaining self-confidence, about gaining friendships, and about gaining life skills. For some parents, it's about being able to watch their child, for the first time, be a part of a team. It's about having the opportunity to connect with other people and feel a group, to become a part of a group. For some parents, it's about being able to watch their child be a part of a team, to have the opportunity to sit in a stand and actually be a parent, and not worry about medical bills, and not worry about hospital bills and visits. For one hour a week, they get to be a kid, and they get to have fun. That is what the league is about. And how exciting is that, that we have this opportunity in our community, along with an accessible playground, that all of you helped raise the money for? Not only can one have the chance to play baseball, be a year free, but everyone gets to play together. Life is a journey, and each day, each one of us in this room has a chance to make a difference. You can share your smile, and you can continue on this amazing journey called life. There's so many volunteers that give of themselves in this community, and we are blessed by all of them. They make Manitowoc great, just like Tom Drill in the back, which I am truly honored to be able to say that I'm going to have my name next to you, and that I actually won this award, because, Tom, you are truly an inspiration. So thank you for all that you do for our community. Congrats to Randy Heinzen on the amazing baseball complex that you helped build, another example of how, if we believe in ourselves or have a dream or a vision, with hard work, we can make it happen. Thank you again for this amazing award, and as always, keep smiling.[1753.01][1753.01](applause)
All right. Well, congratulations. There you go. So the 2019 Volunteer of the Year has to just do what Tom Drill does. So, you know, quit work and volunteer every single day. But no, congratulations, well deserved. We want this program to keep going every single year, and we hope to have 100 of those bricks out here in 100 years, the city of great people who have done great things in our community. So congratulations. If you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you don't have to. We will move on, though, to the remainder of our agenda. We have- We have Stacy Nowell, my assistant, to explain the City of Manitowoc 150th Anniversary Logo Contest.
Yes, as Mayor Nichols said, I'm here to announce the official kickoff of the City of Manitowoc's 150th Anniversary Logo Design Contest. For the entire year of 2020, we have exciting events planned for each month celebrating the 150th anniversary of the city. The winning logo from the contest will be used on the city website, social media, and on all promotional materials announcing and advertising these special events. The winning design will be a very important part of our continued history and should reflect our past, present, and future. Entrance must be a City of Manitowoc resident or a full-time student in the City of Manitowoc. There is no cost to enter the contest, and children and adults of all ages are encouraged to enter. We're looking for the winning logo to include iconic features of the City of Manitowoc, the actual words City of Manitowoc, and other features outlined in the list of contest rules. The artist whose logo is ultimately selected will receive a certificate of appreciation, recognition by Mayor Justin Nichols, and a prize valued at a minimum of $300. The committee has partnered with all of the City of Manitowoc Public Schools, private schools, colleges, as well as the Manitowoc Public Library, the Rar West Art Museum, and the Lake Shore Artists Guild to promote this design contest. The official entry form and complete list of rules can be found on the homepage of the city's website, which is Manitowoc.org, and the deadline to enter is June 12th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions about what's going to happen next year? It's going to be a party. Nothing? All right, thank you, Stacy, for that. We have two public hearings. The first one, purpose of hearing any and all interested parties, the matter of a proposed change to the official map and street vacation to remove a portion of unimproved Archer Street. We'll have the clerk read the proof of publication.
The notice for this hearing was published in the Herald Times Reporter.
On February 25th, March 4th, and March 11th.
Thank you. Paul Brown, city planner.
Okay, thank you. Greg and Tom, Kyle are requesting the Archer Street vacation under State Statute 66.1003 Parent 4 and the official map amendment under State Statute 62.23 Parent 6. Archer Street is dedicated by unimproved right-of-way. It's located south of Broadway Street, west of North 44th Street, and east of Harvest Court. The Kyles, who are the budding property owners, would like to vacate the street and then re-subdivide the property to make some additional lots more saleable. Archer Street was originally dedicated in 1836 as part of the platte of Manitowoc Rapids when the area was in the Territory of Michigan in the county of Brown. So obviously, it's been on the, dedicated for a long time and never been constructed. The street was never constructed due to the conservancy zoning and the change in grade of about 74 feet from the west end of the street to the east end of the street. So basically, it's on a bank. On February 27th, the Plan Commission held a public informational meeting. One adjacent property owner was present at the meeting, and his only concern was just to ensure that he still had access to his lot, which he still will have. The Plan Commission recommended approval of the street vacation and official map amendment. And lastly, the ordinance and resolution will not be acted on at tonight's meeting. That will come in a future meeting. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Paul from the council at this time? All right, seeing none, this is a public hearing, so anyone interested in speaking on this specific subject matter may do so at this time. Anyone interested in speaking on this subject matter? Once, twice? We will close this public hearing. We will move into the next public hearing. Purpose of hearing any and all interested parties, the matter of proposed change in zone from B1 Office Residential to B3 General Business for a property located in 4600 Block of Calumet Avenue. We will have the clerk read the proof of publication.
The notice for this public hearing was published in the Herald Times Reporter on March 4th and March 11th.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay. Calumet Avenue Manitowoc LLC is requesting to rezone property from B1 Office Residential to B3 General Business in the 4600 Block of Calumet Avenue. These are the properties that are actually just west of the new Panera Bread location. Existing land use for the subject property is vacant, undeveloped. It was formerly a location of four residential structures that are currently, or have been razed recently, and there was two vacant lots in there. Existing zoning for the subject property is B1 Office Residential. The petitioner is requesting the B3 zoning district, which is General Business, to allow for the construction of some retail and commercial uses. If you recall, in 2016, the property directly to the north was zoned C1 Commercial. That was for the Meyer property, which was formerly owned by the Manitowoc County Expo Grounds. Per the comprehensive plan, the proposed B3 zoning district is consistent with the planned mixed land use category. And on February 27th, the Plan Commission held a public informational meeting, and at that meeting, no negative comments were received. The Plan Commission recommended unanimously in favor of the rezoning. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Any questions from the council at this time? Seeing none, this is a public hearing for this specific subject matter. If anyone from the public is interested in speaking on this matter, you may do so at this time. Anyone interested in speaking on this matter? Once, twice? We will close this public hearing. Thank you, Paul. We will move into public input. If there's anyone from the public interested in speaking, just keep it on. Anything germane to the business of the City of Manitowoc, you may do so at this time? Yes, sir? Just please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Wejrowski. That's spelled W-E-J-R-O-W-S-K-I. I live at 1301 Spring Street, Manitowoc. Mayor Nichols, elected officials, taxpayers, and citizens. I know the city has bigger problems than what I'm about to say, but to me, this seems like a serious matter. In the past few months while walking down the sidewalk in my neighborhood, a large, very aggressive rottweiler has charged at me, only to be stopped by a three-foot-high wood fence. Since this has happened more than once, I now cross over to the north side of Huron Street and use that sidewalk. Well, 11 days ago, on March 7th, at approximately 2:00 in the afternoon, while crossing the intersection at 12th and Huron, I heard a loud barking. I turned around and saw the same large rottweiler in the middle of the road, running directly at me, jumping and barking. It had large leather mittens on, which I raised in front of my face, clapped them together several times, and screamed at the dog. He stopped charging at me, but continued to bark very aggressively from approximately five to 10 feet from me. Just then, a female motorist stopped her SUV and asked if I was okay. The dog slowly walked across the intersection and went out of view behind a large snowbank in front of 736 North 12th. I asked her to please call the police, since I didn't have my phone with me, which she did. I never got her name before she left, but would like to thank her from the bottom of my heart. I have since filed a formal statement with the police department. I was informed the police department had numerous calls to this area about a dog running loose in the neighborhood, but every time they went to check it out, they found no dog. So no warning was issued to the owner. Now with my formal complaint filed, it becomes the first registered complaint. The second complaint will be a fine. I believe it's like $120 or $130. Please do not take this the wrong way. I am not upset with the police department. They are only enforcing the laws and ordinance that you, the city, have created, and I do believe they're underpaid for the job they're doing. But let me ask you this. If a homeowner doesn't shovel their sidewalk in 24 hours after a snowfall, the city can issue them a $300 fine for a first offense. Yet I can be physically threatened by a large rottweiler running loose while I'm walking a public sidewalk. To me, an unshovelled sidewalk may be inconvenient, but it's far less threatening than a loose dog charging at me or someone else. Let us all hope that no child or elderly person is threatened or harmed by this dog or any other dog while walking down a sidewalk in their neighborhood. I think it's time to review your procedures with matters like this before someone gets seriously hurt by a dog. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Anyone else interested in speaking this evening on anything germane to the business of the City of Manitowoc? Yes, sir? Just come on up and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Roy Lorenz, L-O-R-E-N-T-Z. I live at 1208 South 17th Street in Manitowoc. I am a contractor, have been my whole life. I bought a house approximately five years ago after the hailstorm, have yet since to fix it. I've been working on it. I demoed it the first year, completely gutted it out. I have now received a raise order from the City of Manitowoc, from the Fire and Safety Department, and I'm asking for some time for them not to raise my house. I don't know what else to say. I'm not no good at talking in front of people. I'm very embarrassed. I know that the city had given me numerous amount of tickets, saying my yard, with the lumber I had on my property, was unsanitary, which it wasn't unsanitary. Said I had concrete boulders in the backyard, which came from the property when I broke the sidewalk up. There was a telephone, not telephone pole, excuse me, a clothesline pole that was extremely large that we had pulled out of the ground. It was probably three feet long. If this is what they're considering, a concrete boulder that I was going to use for fill so I could build my garage and store my lumber in to do my house. And now they're telling me that I surpassed the 30 days, which I didn't know about, where I couldn't contest it on raising my house. Excuse me. I don't know. There's other places in the city that are a lot worse house, condition than mine is. It's structurally good, it's sound. I just didn't have the money to fix it right away. There was a number of people that I have done work for in this town, some prominent businessmen, members of the city, that haven't paid me. I had since retained an attorney. Now, I only have six years to recoup this money to take him to court. I will be meeting with him again on Thursday to sign the paperwork for him to get this money so I can, and the material I have for the house, I had, there was a bunch of houses razed from Wisconsin Aluminum Foundry, and I was in there for six weeks working to salvage windows, siding, everything I could, headers, two-by-fours, two-by-sixes, eights, tens, twelves, to put headers in the house, because it was totally gutted. Once you totally gut it, you have to bring everything up to code. I have all the wiring for it. I have the sinks. I don't have the cupboards. I don't have the insulation and the drywall, but I have pretty much everything I need to put this house back together. I had pulled the permit approximately two weeks ago to start on some of it, and I haven't done it yet because the city had told me that it's, it doesn't matter if I had 50 people in there working, I'm only one person, that I would never comply with their order of 60 days that I was given on January 8th. And while the whole city had off, when it was 50 below zero with the wind chill, I was up there trying to break concrete out of the ground. And I did. I did it. I just, I needed a chance to try to, you know, fix my house. I pulled all the permits, I have everything up to code, but they're telling me that I ain't going to have the time to do it because my time is lost. Now, did they set me up to fail? I don't know. Did I get somebody upset at me? I don't know. I'm just, I'm asking for the city council to think this matter over. Please, and let me know. That'd be all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else interested in speaking this evening on anything germane to the business of the City of Manitowoc? Yes? Sure? You can.
As evidenced by the outstanding accomplishments and individuals and agencies, you know, here tonight, I wanted to ask if we couldn't give a shout out to a company, a business, that is also doing something outstanding. And I'm referring to Manitowoc Coffee, Pete and Terry, who have decided to cease selling alcoholic beverages in their place of business. And they are very strong supporters of the community, strong supporters of the drug court. And I just wanted to, you know, sometimes information doesn't get into the newspaper of anything of a positive nature, so I thought this would be a great place to give them, like I said, a public shout out for their great work. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you for doing that. Appreciate it. Anyone else interested in speaking for public input? Once, twice? We'll close public input, and we'll move on to the remainder of our agenda, which is item H, Consent Agenda. Are there any documents to be removed from the consent agenda? If not, then I would look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion in a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. We will move to page seven, item I, Committee Reports, and we will start with Committee of the Whole and Council President Scott McMeans.
Yes, there's four reports on the agenda here. 190296, Hecker Road Property Appraisal will not be coming forward tonight. 190187, Communication from Alder Gabriel was a table document, so that would need to, that would require a motion to untable that for discussion. So that's the first item.
Okay. Is that a motion to take off the table? Alder Sitkowitz?
I'll make the motion to untable document 190187.
Is there a second? Motion in a second. There's no discussion on removing something from the table. So all those in favor? Opposed? That item is removed, and we can bring it up for a recommendation. Alderman McMeans.
Yes, so the recommendation filed here is to place on file. So we'll look for a motion to place on file.
Is there a motion to place on file? Motion by Sitkowitz, is there a second? Second by Williams. All right, the motion and second is to place on file. These documents, any discussion? Alderman Sitkowitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know there are many people that have inquired about this agenda item over the last month. Many of you have contacted me directly. People are wondering about the meaning of this information in this document, why and what. People are also wondering why is council even wasting their time on this issue when there are more important issues to address? And frankly, I could not agree more. I too want to focus on council business and not be wasting my time, month after month, addressing one-way communication from Alder Gabriel. Unprofessional emails to department heads, asking for personal relationships that are signed only your BFF. Text messages sent to staff and alders that are incoherent. Dropping off applications to City Hall for a Manitowoc County position, and then when HR called to follow up to ask what should they do with this application, denying that she was even here, or dropped it off altogether when video clearly shows otherwise. And finally, several alders named or brought into a letter to me as chairperson, signed by Alder Gabriel. This is not a personal note, but correspondence in her capacity as a professional. This letter was sent, included to the majority of the Personnel Committee, including myself as the chairman, Alder Zakala's address as vice chair, and Alder Coomer's return address, who is also a member of the Personnel Committee. I could have easily made this letter a Personnel Committee document. However, with the inclusion of the title Mayor and also Alder Lots, I ask that it be placed on the Committee of the Whole, since it deals with the entire council or the majority of council. So Alder Gabriel, I could really care less what you think about me or what you have to say. However, what bothers me today is that you have chosen to include my wife into your antics by referencing her in that letter. You continue to call my home and leave voicemails that are incoherent with nothing more than ramblings. This continued even while I asked no longer for you to do so. As alders, we have expectations to be professional, and clearly, Alder Gabriel does not care about those expectations. She claimed in the paper that this is all no big, it's all no big deal. This was expected. Everyone knew it was coming, and she wanted to start the communication. If this was all about conversation, I'm puzzled as to why, twice on Friday, you tried to have this document removed from tonight's agenda. The conversations are already starting, and that's why the Personnel Committee has begun work on a policy for code of conduct for elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sitkowitz. Anyone else interested in speaking on this subject matter to place on file? Alder Gabriel? Yes, Alder Gabriel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll respond, since clearly this is directed at me. I'm curious, Alder Sikowitz, if this truly is not city business, then what is your reason for making it city business? My conduct is not up to you to determine whether it's appropriate or not. It's up to the voters. I have responded to all constituent concerns, taken the time to be respectful with all of them and followed up, including getting the resources to bring that forward, whatever their concerns were. It has been challenging, and yet this is another challenge. I don't understand why I continue. I don't think it's appropriate to put this in the front page of the paper. I had to learn about this from the paper and from the agenda. If you have concerns, just like any constituent, feel free to contact me. I don't feel this is city committee business. Thank you.
Thank you. I will.
There was some accusations that I'd like to respond.
I will allow you to respond. I will just note, as I always do with this, I won't allow it to become a back-and-forth debate. So if it gets to that point, I'm going to stop it, but that's been my rule for ten years. So go ahead, Alderman Sikowitz.
There's no debating this. This was obviously a council action. There's a lot of people that have sent me mail over the years. They usually use my first name or Mister. They very, nobody's ever sent me a Christmas card labeled Chairman. Thank you.
Alderman Bry. Oh, I'm sorry. Got to turn, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm just very disappointed, once again, that, you know, there was a censure action since last year with Alderman Gabriel. We removed him from the committees. And at that time, I don't think myself, and I don't even think the majority of this council was, wanted to be reactive to that, but we just asked for an honest explanation. We didn't get one. And that's why, that's why I changed my mind and the support of the censure and to remove you from the committees. And when I first saw this letter, once again, I was like, what does this mean? If it was addressed to Alderman Sikowitz or Chairman Sikowitz, fine, I understand that. And I'm gonna give you a chance to explain it, but why was it addressed to Chairman Sikowitz with Alderman Sikola's address and a return address of Alder Coomer's? And then with the address greetings, Mayor Lotz? Or hello, Mayor Lotz? Can you rationalize why you said, why it wasn't just addressed to Alderman Sikowitz? And hello, Alderman Sikowitz, or greetings, Alderman Sikowitz?
Since that was a pointed question, I'll allow you to respond, Alder Gabriel.
Well, if it's in the paper or on Facebook, it must be true. So according to the article, it was written to spark communication.
How do you respond? I'm done. Thank you.
Can we just clarify for the audience, who said to spark conversation?
Sure.
Whose quote is that? Whose quote was that that said, this happened to spark conversation?
Actually, I was asked about this, and I did provide a statement from my personal address, which we can, may I ask the city clerk to attach it? Because I didn't think it was city business, but certainly we're making it city business. So this was my response.
Yeah, absolutely. We can put that into the record, absolutely.
All right.
I just, just to clarify, that was you who said you wanted to spark conversation, correct?
This is the, how I responded to the inquiry.
Okay. I'll take that as a yes.
Mr. Mayor, if we may, could we hear Alderman Gabriel's comments if she wants to attach to the record?
Here.
Is it going to be part of the record?
The quote is, the question is from Alyssa Schaefer at the Herald Times Reporter. The discussion starts around twenty-seven thirty-three. Also, I just checked, and the unapproved minutes for the February eighteenth meeting have been posted on the city's website. That was on Tuesday, February twenty-sixth. Alder Gabriel responded, in quotes, "a big deal over nothing," end quote. So we'll just put that in for the record. Okay. So, yeah.
I'd like to call the question.
Sure.
Objection.
Okay, we can't do that then, because there is an objection. I'll pipe in, since I did last time, too. Yeah, I guess I just, I, for our own benefit, I think we need to be able to tell the citizens what is an official council communication versus what is personal. And to me, something that's addressed Chairman Sikowitz is work-related, because he's the chairman of the Personnel Committee. So when we're asking, why are we talking about it as a council document, I would argue it was addressed to a chairman of a committee. It wasn't addressed to Eric or, you know, Mister Sikowitz or whatever. I think that's where one question comes in. And that's, since you said, why is it city business? I would be able to say to the citizens, anything that's addressed Chairman is city business. Alderman Sikola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One brief question, I guess. Like my address, Alder Sikowitz to him at my house, Alder Coomer's return address, Alderman Lotz inside the letter, why'd you select the individuals you did? I'm just curious.
Again, a pointed question. I'll allow you to answer.
Okay. So I heard two issues. One is the correspondence of official city documents, which you've defined as having a title before them.
I didn't define, I was just asking.
Okay.
For the record.
Well, I just, I happen to have a couple of letters here I was gonna drop off at City Hall, which are addressed with Alderman. I'm not called Alderman usually, except for in this position. So these are official city documents then? So hopefully we can place, or I was hoping to bring them to the appropriate standing committee. It's difficult to get those on the agenda. But maybe they should be going to the Committee of the Whole. I get tons of letters. So if we need to make these Committee of the Whole items, I will do that. Otherwise, I've been trying to bring them before standing committees for the constituents.
Okay. Constituents' letters, again, just for the public, if a constituent lends a letter to an alder, addressed as an alder, absolutely it can become a council document. I'm not aware of, again, for the citizens' information, we do have a rule in our council rules that any alder can bring a document to any standing committee. Alder Gabriel is not barred from that at all. So I, if there was an issue there, we'd have to talk to the chairman of the committee, who refused to take it up for whatever rationale, but that, absolutely, if those are documents that are addressed to you as an alder, we can take them up. I don't know which ones you're talking about, so.
Good. And when they're not taken up by the committees, how would you like that addressed?
I guess I'm not aware of a situation. In fact, I'm aware of the reverse, where so many documents have been taken up because of Rule Eight versus not taken up. So I don't know if there's any other alders who are aware of. Alderman Bry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I guess that's where I'd like to question.
Did you turn your mic off?
Hello?
Yeah, now you're good.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Since now this discussion's evolved towards communications, and she never did directly answer Alderman Sikola's question about the different addresses, like she asked as well, I guess show some examples of where these letters or communications haven't been addressed by committee chairs. I have been, and I guess I might, I sort of relate to myself, every request you've asked for the Finance Committee, I've gladly put on an agenda. I've seen, I guess, Alderman Sikowitz with personnel questions, I've always seen your communications or questions put on his agendas. Have you tried asking, I guess I don't know what the letters involve, so it obviously would be directed to a certain committee, but have you approached the committee chairpersons of those committees for those letters about putting it on an agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
And, but, I'm sorry, I still had the floor, so. And as far as the letter, I mean, I have as much information as anybody does, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alderman Bry used to have the floor, if you'd like.
Thank you. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Alderman Sikowitz.
Just to be clear, the answer to Alder Sikola's question was that she has just as much information as everyone else. Call the question.
Is there any objection to calling the question? All those in favor of placing on file?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. We'll take up the other Committee of the Whole items.
Document two.
Oops, I'm sorry.
Document two thirty-nine is a report requesting authorization to acquire the CN Peninsula. Committee returns same, recommending to adopt the recommendations in the report.
Council's your pleasure on this report.
Move through the committee report, Mr. Mayor. Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine, or eight to one. Alderman Williams voting no. Thank you.
Document two ninety-eight is a report of the Special Events Committee recommending approval for the following events, subject to council action. Acoustic Fest on July twentieth, waiver of rules prohibiting alcohol in the park, no parking on a portion of the east side of South Twelfth Street. Sputnik Fest on September seventh, waiver of the noise ordinance until ten-thirty P.M. Street closures of Park Street from North Seventh to Ninth and North Eighth from State to St. Clair, no parking on one side of North Ninth from State to St. Clair. Committee returns same, recommending approval of the report.
Council's your pleasure on this report.
Move to approve the report. Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Yeah, we just had a closed session on there, just in case, but it doesn't look like we need it.
No, no closed sessions need, that's all. I think I have an agenda. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. We will move then to the Finance Committee, and Alderman Jim Bry as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The clerk has our documents.
Document two twenty-five is a resolution terminating TID District fourteen and authorizing treasurer to distribute the excess increment to overlaying districts. Committee returns same, recommending to adopt the resolution.
Council's your pleasure on this resolution.
Move for adoption of the resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Document two twenty-six is a resolution terminating TID fifteen and authorizing treasurer to distribute excess increment to overlaying districts. Committee returns same, recommending to adopt the resolution.
Council's your pleasure on this resolution.
Move for adoption of the resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Alderman Bry.
Quickly, Mr. Mayor, for those not knowing, especially TID District number fifteen, this is the Harbor Town District for TIF. So probably, and hopefully not eventually, but the most successful TIF district here in the city of Manitowoc, and hopefully will have future things, but we're in an assessed value of over eighty million dollars. Does that sound crazy?
Seventy, seventy-five, yeah.
I probably, still, there's still potential, there's still room in there to grow. So great project. I'm, you know, this was definitely a city-county collaboration back several, many years ago, but worked out very well, and it's grown for, it's grown unbelievably. And we are paying off, this TIF district is now closed. So the entities will now start experience the tax, all the entities will experience the tax revenue generated from this property.
Correct. And there's about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars left in that fund. That'll be a check written to all those taxing entities. So to all our friends out there who don't like TIF districts, this one's paying off. This one's paying off. Any further discussion? Seeing none, then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Document two thirty-three is a request from Walmart to extend the alcohol premise to include a specific parking stalls designated for online grocery pickup. Committee returns same, recommending to approve the request.
Council's your pleasure on this report.
Move for adoption of the committee's report, Mr. Mayor.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Alderman Howell.
Thank you. I just, I wasn't at that meeting. Someone bring me up to speed quick on the extension of the alcohol? I mean, I just.
Alderman Bry.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Essentially, it's the same thing that's being done at Pick 'n Save and Festival and probably other grocery stores coming. You can order online or order ahead of time your groceries, and you have to have an extension of the liquor license essentially to bring that liquor license, or liquor across into that area. Because technically, you're paying for it in that area.
All right. I was thinking.
It's a new thing that.
But it's not gonna be like sales out there, you know, like a standalone sale out there.
Right, correct.
We do have.
And the person who orders is required to be the one to pick it up and show proper ID.
Right.
Yes.
Mayor, we do have Ken Abbott, who is the manager of Walmart, out in the audience, if anybody, if it's all with you, or if anybody has any questions of him.
I'm smiling.
I think I answered.
Yeah.
It's a new thing. Yeah, it's the new, new thing places are doing.
Yes.
So, all right, you, good, okay. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry, who is no? No, okay. Motion carries eight to one. Alderman Williams voting no.
Document two thirty-four is a resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing. Committee returns same, recommending to adopt the resolution.
Council's your pleasure on this resolution.
Move for adoption of the resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Document two forty-nine is an agreement for management services for the twenty-nineteen Manitowoc Farmers Market. Committee returns same, recommending to adopt the agreement.
Council's your pleasure on this report.
Move for adoption of the committee's report, Mr. Mayor.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Alderman Sikowitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna support this. I'm just, I'm a little disappointed that when we went out to contract for the Farmers' Market a couple of years ago to get it out of the city, the main intent was to grow the market into a larger event. This unfortunately cuts basically, essentially, the markets in half and gets rid of Tuesday and only is a Saturday market. And I know we put some controls in there for the marketing plan to be sooner for the twenty-nineteen year. And I hope that there's something about bringing that other night market back. And I wasn't able to sit in, I know the negotiations went through your office, Mayor, but there was no information provided why. When I was reading through it this weekend again, it just bothered me that we're taking away one, basically, half of the markets and not, and just Saturdays. So I'm disappointed with that, but I hope that their marketing plan will be effective in place to grow the market even further as originally planned. So, thank you.
I'll respond to that, since you pointed, I mean, yeah, the negotiations did happen through, and I felt the same. Absolutely, we wanted the Tuesday market to remain. That was a top priority of the city at the time. But we did have very good conversations, and there are some new board members with Grow It Forward that truly want to, while taking a step back, taking a couple steps forward and really marketing and promoting the Saturday market, making that viable and making it very successful in order to support another night market. Unfortunately, the Tuesday one kind of fizzled for a plethora of different reasons, but we still wanted it. But, you know, they brought forward some good points, that they really want to focus on the Saturday market and make that, and sell that, and first. I don't want to speak for them, but I think their goal is, is to get back to another day, because that's, you know, that's what a lot of places are doing, and that's the goal. But wanted to, wanted to focus on Saturday. So I saw another hand pop up over here. Alder Gabriel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just a reflection on that as well, when we look at farmer market success, I know we have a lot of support in this community. I'm a big fan of the farmers' market. I think it puts a lot on our local farmers to keep up their farms and then also be coming in multiple days to market those, or their products as well. So I'm looking forward to actually concentrating on Saturdays. I like a couple of the amendments put in here in collaboration with our special events going on. going on. Um, I, I, I think these are great improvements, so I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried unanimously.
Document 291 is an ordinance to amend Section 11.010 Part IV of the Municipal Code to increase fees for operator licenses and to require a licensed ID badge be carried on licensed bartenders.
Council's pleasure on this ordinance?
Move for adoption of the ordinance, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Just for the license holders out there, we are looking at getting a nicer license, correct?
That is correct.
A more durable, durable license like we have for your keys for, for City Hall, more, something that won't, uh, if you throw it in the wash, it'll still be fine probably, so. Just for the bartenders out there. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried unanimously.
Document 292 is an ordinance to amend Section 15.510 Part III of the Municipal Code to change mobile home or manufactured home parks license periods to the calendar year. Committee returns same, recommending adoption of the ordinance.
Council's pleasure on this ordinance?
Move for adoption of the ordinance, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion.
Just quickly, Mr. Mayor, as a, as a point of interest, uh, city clerk Noiser brought it up that the three mobile home parks we have in our, in our city were, the licensing were at different times of year, so to bring them all into the, the calendar year would be perfect, and so it would reduce the workload in the, in the city clerk's office and make it more streamlined, so. It's a no-brainer.
Sounds good. Any further discussion? Seeing none, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried unanimously.
Document 295 is an ordinance amending the amended zone map of the city of Manitowoc. Rezoning property in the 4600 block of Calumet Avenue from B1 Office Residential to B3 General Business. Committee returns same, recommending adopting the ordinance.
Council's pleasure on this ordinance?
Move for adoption of the ordinance, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried unanimously. That is all we have for finance. Anything else? Alderman Bry?
Just quickly, Mr. Mayor, uh, our next scheduled meeting would have been April 2nd. There is a election that day, so we're going to be moving to April 1st, and that's not April Fool's joke. Uh, graciously, Alderman Sikwitz, as Chair of the Personnel Committee, has agreed to move his meeting earlier to, I think, 5:30 that night?
5:30.
5:30. So, at the very least, we'll be meeting at 6:15 slash 6:30, but it'll be immediately following Personnel, so we'll get the final timeout to, obviously, the committee members and the city clerk's office as well. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Bry. We will move to the Personnel Committee, and Alderman Eric Sikwitz is Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one document, and the clerk has it.
Document 299 is a resolution to change to vendor for short-term disability in addition